I hereby call the October 6, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Glenn?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter is not here. Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Zagorodny?
Here.
And Commissioner Scoggan let me know he would not be able to make it today, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Any objections to approving the agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the agenda is approved. Pledge of Allegiance, would Commissioner Glenn please listen to the pledge?
Deputies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Consent agenda. On the consent agenda for tonight, we have minutes, regular meeting minutes from September 15, 2025. Introduction for public hearing quasi judicial matters, there are none. Introduction for public hearing legislative matters, there are few. Resolution 25 dot, 25-19, a resolution of the Matanuska Sittna Borough Planning Commission recommending adoption of the fiscal year 2027 capital improvement program. Public hearing date, October 20, 2025. Staff is Natasha Hindle, current planner. Resolution 2520, a resolution of the Matanuska Sittna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance repealing MSB 17.02 mandatory land use permit in its entirety and adopting MSB 17.07 land use review. Public hearing date, October 20, 2025. Staff is Alex Strong, planning and land use director. Resolution 25-21, a resolution of the Matanuska Sittna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSB 17.55 to reduce the minimum building setback requirements from pedestrian easements. Public hearing date, October 20, 2025. Staff Alex Strong, planning and land use director. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Committee reports none, agency staff reports none, land use classifications none. Audience participation, three minutes per person for items not scheduled for public hearing. If there is anyone on the phone who would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda for a public hearing, please press star three. Caleb, anybody on the phone? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? All right. Seeing and hearing that there are no persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing audience participation? No objection, audience participation is closed. Public hearing quasi judicial matters, none. Public hearing legislative matters. Resolution 25-16, a resolution of the Matanuska Sittna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSB 17.17 Denali State Park Special Land Use District by eliminating a provision that allows the spud boundary to change automatically when the boundary of the Denali State Park changes. Staff Alex Strong, planning and land use director. Mr. Strong, please provide your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to repeat, this is Alex Strong, planning director for the Matsu Borough. This ordinance is, basically, I consider a cleanup ordinance. There was a provision added to this code that says that if the boundary of the state park changes, that our special use district, which is a zoning district, automatically changes with that boundary. Right now, they perfectly match, but the state could change the park boundary, and according to this, it would change our boundary too. Well, the, the, the only body that has the authority to amend our boundaries is the Borough Assembly, not the state. And as well as there's a, there's a court case called Homer versus Griswold. It's one of the Griswold versus Homer cases where it said that the Planning Commission has to review any change to zoning, zoning laws, and so this just eliminates that provision. So if, if the Assembly wants to change the park or the spud boundary, it can, but the state cannot do that. So that's what this is.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Strong? Any questions at all about resolution 25-16? All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone on the phone who would like to speak, please press star three. Caleb, anybody join us? Nope, okay. Is there anyone in the, in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, seeing and hearing no other persons to speak, are there any objections to closing the public hearing? Seeing and hearing none, I now close the public hearing. Staff, would you like to, well, there aren't any response, sorry about that. So now, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 25-16.
Commissioner McCabe, I will remove 25-15, or 16, excuse me.
Commissioner McCabe moves 25-16, can I get a second?
And I'll second that.
The motion is seconded by Commissioner Glenn. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. What, what spurred this? Did something happen that brought it on the radar?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. So Alex Strong to Commissioner McCabe. So we did get an inquiry from somebody within the park, asking whether the spud applies to them or not. So this is not a very, there's very little development up there, so we're not using this section of code very often. Sometimes we had a conditional use permit and, but there was a question as to whether any of the private properties within the special use district, whether the law applies to them at all, because there is a provision in the state park. When the park boundary was created, it says that all the private inholdings in the park are not part of the park. So they're saying, well, maybe it doesn't apply to me. Well, when we look at the code, it's, yes, it's clear that the, the boundary of the spud is the outer boundary, and the spud does apply to the private properties within that. But, you know, in doing that research, it was like, we stumbled across this provision of code and said, let's get rid of it, because it's just not right. So that's what we're doing here.
Can I ask, is the entirety of the park in the boundary of the Matsu Borough?
Oh, so, I, I don't-
I thought part of it was in the Denali Borough.
Yeah, I think it's, part of it is in the Denali Borough.
So those folks wouldn't be impacted one way or the other by this?
So nobody should be affected by this at all. This will not affect any properties.
Okay. Any other discussion? Of them? Okay. Are there any objections to approving resolution 25-16 as written? Hearing and seeing no objections, resolution 25-16 has been approved. Resolution 25-17, a resolution of the Matanuska Sittna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSB Title 17 zoning to create MSB 17.77 Large Lot District. Staff Alex Strong, planning and land use director. Mr. Strong, please provide your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this ordinance would create a new type of district. It wouldn't include any properties within the district, but it would create a new type of district that property owners could petition to become a part of down the road once this is established. And so essentially, if you have an area where two thirds of the property owners decide that they want to be cut, if, if this, if this were to get adopted, then you can have an area where two thirds of the, the property owners decide they want to be in this district, and if they successfully go through the petition process and have a meeting and get approved by the Assembly to be in this district, then none of the properties within that district could be subdivided smaller than five acres. Any properties that are already less than five acres within that district can remain at five acres, but they could not further subdivide into smaller lots. They could like eliminate common lot lines or, or do whatever, but they couldn't subdivide in a way that would make them any smaller. So that's a, this is sponsored by Assembly member Hale, and so we created it and brought it forward.
Okay, Commissioner, do you have any questions for Mr. Strong? Yes, I'm curious, is it, would this apply to anywhere in the valley where, where a group of folks wanted to do this? Or there are some restrictions on that?
Yeah, so this, this would apply boroughwide, and, and this would essentially establish the framework so somebody near Talkeetna could do it, or somebody out in the Butte could do it, you know, or a group of property owners. So it, it could be taken, any community or area within the borough could be included in this if they, if they went through the process.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Commissioner McCabe. Is there any, I didn't see it in the pack. Is there any delineation on how big these areas can be? So like, a square mile? I mean, what, what determines what the area is? What's the boundary of the areas?
Yeah, that's a great question. There are a couple of guardrails here, let's see. So all the lots had to be contiguous? I think that's it, though. So you couldn't do like, you know, two small lots or something like that, because that would, you know, you run into spot zoning type issues if it's too small, but there's no limitation on how large it could be. But it just has to be contiguous, and you have to have two thirds of the people come forward, and then it has to get approved by the Assembly.
Through the chair, Commissioner Collins, here. So per se, so since there's no limitations to this, so we could have, say, two property owners come together that own 100 acre lots and petition each other to create their own district, and therefore would lock down their land that if they ever decided to in the future sell their land, that it could no longer be broken down or subdivided down to lots smaller than five acres.
Conceivably, if they are two large lots, like 100 acre lots, then yeah, I, that I think is a correct way to state that, that that would make it so it could not be further subdivided below five acres. However, of course, the Assembly could always remove it if they wanted to.
Right, right, okay. And then, so furthermore, if, let's say this was established, a district, a new district, I'm assuming this is a new district type that has, does not establish in our code currently. Right, so, okay, so then, if, let's say, I know, again, we're painting here, right? But I'm just trying to just lay kind of some of the potential objections in the future, which I don't think happens very much, is, okay, we have a property owner that has 25 acres of raw land, right? And wants to sell it or sell a portion of that, right? And then eventually, and it is in this new district type, right? And wants to sell 10 acres of that, but it falls into this, you know, new division. Now, the question that I'm going to have is how to unring the bell? In the sense that, okay, I'm in this district now, but I want to undo this. How, is there any definition or guidance into doing that?
So first of all, if they want to sell off 10 acres, they can always subdivide 10 acres off. That would, this would not preclude them from doing that. Let's see. So the process, the same process for establishing the district is also applies to modifying the district. So that person could petition to have the district modified to come out of it. It's the same process. There's also always the option of an Assembly member can bring any ordinance forward to modify or remove a district. So it was really two different processes, I wish that somebody could do it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Strong? At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone on the phone who would like to speak, please press star three. Caleb, anybody? Thank you. And I know that we have at least one person signed up for audience participation, is Rebecca Gamble here? Good afternoon, ma'am. If you could make sure your mic is on, and please spell, spell your first and last name for the record.
Thank you, Rebecca Gamble, R.E.B.E.C.C.A.G.A.M.B.L.E.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I do want to speak on behalf of, I am a builder and velper, as well as the president of the Matsu Home Builders Association. We did send in a letter of opposition to you, hopefully you got that. But I wanted to go over some of our points of why we oppose this ordinance. First one is it has restrictive property rights. The ordinance imposes conditions on property use that may limit a landowner's ability to subdivide or develop their land, even when compatible with community goals. It could restrict residents' flexibility and diminish the inherent value of property ownership. This includes anybody trying to gift land to kids. If they want to parcel off two acres of their 25, they can't do that, because their neighbors may say it's not okay. We don't think that that's right. High threshold for implementation, so designing a district requires a petition of 67% as listed in tax records, as long, along with boundary maps and documentation. This high threshold creates undue burdens for property owners seeking reasonable land use options in transitioning or evolving communities. Impacts on housing affordability and diversity. In a region where housing demand continues to grow, limiting development through rigid lot size regulation may contribute to housing shortages and inhibit the creation of diverse and affordable housing options. We're already unable, a lot of people to afford a house at half acre and acre lots. If we have to start developing at only five acre lot subdivisions, a lot of people are not going to be able to afford housing, and we're going to have an even bigger crisis out in the valley. Some of the cost burdens, so a five acre lot has 330 feet of road frontage, for example, which is maintained by the borough. So that's one lot for them to maintain. If you put a house on there, let's say it's $450,000, it only generates so much in taxes to maintain that part of the road. Out of five acres, if a developer can get four lots out of it, you're looking at maybe 1.5 million in tax revenue or to go off of, and that's going to help maintain that road frontage. So we think that that's going to help the borough. We don't think that the cost is worth a five acre lot. And who pays for those missing taxes? And, you know, anybody who owns a large portion or parcel of land, their value will have inherently gone down. Because the amount that we can pay as developers for that land, we're not going to pay as much if we can only get five acre parcels out of it instead of acre. So we'd like you to consider these points that we've made. We do support the overall goal of preserving our community's character, and we advocate for alternatives that uphold our property rights, flexibility, and affordability. And we do welcome meaningful collaboration between the borough, property owners, builders, and residents to craft something that balanced protections and growth. So we encourage the Planning Commission to reconsider this structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue? Coming up, sir, and if you could just please spell your first and last name.
Good evening, Maxwell Sumner, M.A.X.W.E.L.L.S.U.M.N.E.R. First off, thanks everyone for serving on the Planning Commission, we appreciate. I know it's a lot of, a lot of hard work. I'm not going to mince words here. When I read this thing, I puked a little bit in my mouth. This is, uh, this is probably about the worst, worst ordinance I've ever seen. It's a nimbyism at its worst. Before you guys do vote on this, I think you should read the current borough code, because there already exists a large lot district. You know, it takes around 100% of the votes, lot owners put something into a large lot district. This lowers that threshold, creates a new large lot district and puts the, or, uh, threshold at 65%. So you can have two thirds of their neighbors that decide that they, you know, even though they made an investment decision like everyone else with the rules in place, they want to steal from their neighbors and diminish the value of their neighbors, because they think that they should live a certain sort of way, or do a certain sort of thing with their property. I don't think you should support this. I think I should read the current 17.76 before you make any decision on this, and see what the, you know, what the difference is with this new large lot district that they're trying to create. I mean, I, I think I already know what most of you guys feel about this thing, but hopefully you take this into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. Again, please spell and spell your first and last name for the record.
Yeah, good evening, my name's Rod Hanson, H.A.N.S.O.N. I'm here not tonight as a board member of the North Lakes Council. I'm just here as an individual with some curiosity. I guess I'm a little confused, because I do know of a large lot district that's on the borough website up by Talkeetna. I believe it was a two acre designation, but there is an existing, there's one existing large lot district as I, that I know of in the borough already. I believe it's a two acre minimum versus a five acre minimum. I do, and I'm not sure if the previous speaker was speaking on behalf of himself as a person or as an Assembly member, but I, I do think there's another side to this, and, and that would be, suppose I own a 40 acre piece of property, and I'm aware that there's people in my area that really value large lots versus small lots, and want to see their neighborhood continue to be a rural setting and less of a developed setting. And if I own that property and I'm getting ready to develop that property, why wouldn't I have the right as a developer to say, I want the future of this property to be five acre lots and no smaller? And contrary to an assertion that that drives values down, I think that actually brings values up for those who want to reside in an area that isn't so densely populated. I'm not sure what brought this forward, and if maybe the previous ordinance that allowed that district in, in Talkeetna area to exist was repealed, and now it's coming back. So I'm not quite sure of the history, and, you know, maybe it's worth getting curious and asking Alex some questions about that as you, as you debate this. But I do think there's another side to this, and that is just consider those who put high value in less dense development. Whether it's two acre or five acre lots, I know a lot of people who would love to live in those areas versus very condensed one acre lot subdivisions, including myself. I live in, on a large lot. I'm surrounded by three other large lots. It was a family deal. And when I read this ordinance, scanning whether I decided I wanted to come to this meeting tonight, I thought, you know, that's something I might want to do with the other family members to, to really set the future of that area up. We have it in our, in our, what do you call them, covenants? But covenants are really only enforceable through, you know, civil action. It would be nice if there was an allowance in code to allow that. So those are my thoughts individually, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue? Yes, sir.
I'm Mike Thompson, WM Construction. I build houses, develop land. And, you know, that gives me a, do I have to spell my name?
Is it common spelling of Thompson?
It's common spelling, yeah. So, you know, when we, we sell, got up here and said the pledge of allegiance, and, and, you know, for liberty and justice for all, and I want you to think about this before you vote on this, but where's the liberty and justice in my neighbors telling me what I can do with my property? It's, you know, that's kind of unjust, un-American, and, and I'm, I'm against this. It's, it's terrible, terrible ordinance. And anyway, I'm not really good at public speaking, but I would hope you vote it down just for that reason. It's, it's unfair for, you know, for someone who owns property, for two thirds of their neighbors to get together and say, hey, we're going to do this, and then you're stuck in this area, and now you can't do what you want to do with your land. It's, it's just not right. So anyway, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue? Okay. Seeing and hearing no other persons to speak, are there any objections to closing the public hearing? Seeing and hearing none, now close the public hearing. Mr. Strong, I wonder if you'd like to respond to some of the comments, and particularly, I'm hoping that you can speak to Mr. Sumner's issue about the, the distinction between current law and what this would do, in terms of just the major changes it would make.
Yeah, you bet. So there is currently a district called Large Lot Single Family Residential Land Use District. And it does have a minimum lot size of, I believe, two acres. But it also comes with a lot of other restrictions. You can't have a dog team. You can only have one inoperable vehicle on your entire property. There's restrictions on mobile homes, travel trailers, campers, tents. So there's all these other restrictions, and the, the Assembly member who requested this ordinance did not want all those other restrictions. And so, and he also wanted it at five acres, and so that's how we wrote it. It required building a brand new district.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Strong about this issue? All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 25-17. At least so we can have discussion.
We're open for discussion?
Yeah, we need to, we need to move it along, yeah, we need to have a motion in a second before we can begin discussion. So can I get a, can I get someone to move 25-17 so we can? I'll move it, I'll move 25-17, this Commissioner Allen, if somebody else will second it, so we can talk about it.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Collins has seconded it. All right, now we can open it up for discussion. Who'd like to go first? Commissioner Collins?
Yeah, thank you. I, I have a hard time implementing other, a majority's will over a minority one when it comes to property ownership. I don't see how this, personally, when I hear some of this stuff, and then the, the further definition of, of the code, it sounds more like a homeowners association in trying to enact that into code. I, I don't think this is going to do really any good in the sense of adding just more layers and, and red tape or processes that may be unnecessary. I mean, at the end of the day, if, if property owner wants to sell or do something in those lines with that property, I, I don't see how a majority vote of, of joint, conjoining property owners can put, ill, push their will on, on, on a property owner in general.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, Commissioner Glenn, I'm a no on this as well. I mimic exactly what he just said.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any, any other discussion? I, I'll tell you, I've been, I think, in my long tenure on this commission, I've been very philosophically consistent about this issue, about the notion that a chunk of your neighbors can then dictate what you get to do with your land for the rest of your life. And we've seen this play out in the land use, or the- And we've seen this play out in the land use or the, you know, with the lakes and we've had these discussions. Now, we keep, the Assembly tends to go the other way on us on that, but that's okay. We're supposed to make independent decisions. And so that troubles me very much, especially when you look at the situation like we've seen in some of these lakes where huge chunks of these people that own the land don't even live in Alaska. They live in California. They live in other parts of the Lower 48. And they're telling people who actually have their homes and are trying to raise their families what they can and can't do with their land. I just philosophically have a real problem with that. And the other problem I have with it is it really is a way to meddle from the grave, which is something we really want to avoid. And so, you know, you do something like this, great grandkids down the road are now locked in and they could find themselves in real financial straits where they could save the land if they could just subdivide a piece of it, that kind of thing. And now we're going to, you know, potentially put people in a situation where they have to sell their family homes, that kind of stuff. So those are, I think, real concerns that are presented by something like this. And so I'm also a no. Any other discussion?
Through the chair. Just wanted to, just a couple of comments to that is one, you know, I'm in the belief that loose grip carries more water than a tight grip. One, and then second, if there's, you know, Assembly changes things or even brings up perhaps questions of, you know, why certain things are decided here or not, I just wanted to, you know, be at least noted that, you know, we have, we've had this discussion. We are diving into these topics. We are voicing our opinions and not blanket stating things or where these decisions are, may or may not come from, that there is transparency here and that, you know, we have full discussion on things. And that just because you want to, you know, petition things and want to make these changes, that's fine. But I challenge the Assembly members to go back and read through the notes and/or the packets that, based after the decisions that we make, that they fully vet these out as opposed to just putting blanket statements out there that may not understand why this commission does certain things or not, that those go into detail and actually research, we know why we do that as opposed to just putting a blanket statement out there that we're not discussing these things.
I understand.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
I just want to go on the record as being pro-liberty and I totally oppose this.
Let's see, we need to do a vote based on what folks have said. I think we should do a formal vote anyway. I think that's appropriate procedure. Well, I mean, I understand if we shoot this down, we're going to need to put something in writing to pass on, and that's exactly what you're talking about. We need to tell the Assembly why we're shooting it down. And so we need to do that work. But I think before we get to that, we need to have a vote.
All right. Agreed. So if there's no objection, you don't need a vote. But if there's nobody that seems to support it, you still need to vote, even if it looks like it's going to be unanimous. So.
I guess I haven't heard from Commissioners Zagorodny.
Thank you, guys, for giving me an opportunity to be here. I would have to agree with everybody that's spoken here and I'd be against this ordinance too.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So I think that probably, we don't need to do the formal vote then?
Still should have a formal vote.
We still want to do the formal. Okay. We're still going to do the formal vote. And if you just, it doesn't need to be secret or anything. So do all we need to do is vote or do you need to do anything on your end? Okay. If everyone could just vote now?
Commissioner Allen, have you voted?
I did.
Try again.
It's lit up on my thing. Nobody here is, it's not lit up anywhere.
Let's see if it.
Oh, I have scotch in it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's already lit up. Can I change it again? Does that work?
So I'm going to reset so everybody don't touch your buttons.
Okay.
So that needs to be, that needs to be like that.
Can everybody vote real quick?
Sure.
For some reason, that shit's not working. Let's just do a roll call. Yeah.
Okay. You can do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Glenn?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Collins?
No.
Commissioner McCabe?
No.
Commissioner Zagorodny?
No.
And the motion has failed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Alex, if you want to maybe walk us through next steps here?
Sure. So as always is my recommendation. So I prepare a resolution in support always for the topic that we're discussing. If that motion or if that resolution fails, you still want to communicate to the Assembly what your recommendation is. So there's always a couple of different ways to go about it. One way is you could have modified this resolution to have it be sort of not supporting it. But since this has failed, now we're in the boat where we need to adopt a new resolution that explains your rationale as to why you do not support this ordinance.
All right. Imagine we could pull three or four bullet points out of the discussions we just had if anyone wants to take a stab at that?
And what, I guess, there's a couple of options here too. We can either make the sausage on the floor right here or we can take a little break and tie some things up as a starting point. If a commissioner wants to take the lead on drawing a couple of wherethes up, it can give us a starting point and then we can go from there.
Okay. What do you recommend? 10 or 15 minutes? 10 minutes enough?
10 minutes.
10 minutes enough? Okay, we'll take a break for 10 minutes. Thanks. Okay, let's go back on record. The time is now 6:45 PM. All right, Mr. Strawn, what do you have for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So let me bring it over. This is very simple and basic. It has a new number, Resolution 25-22. And the title is "A Resolution of the Matanuskus Sit in a Borough Planning Commission Recommending Failure of an Ordinance Amending MSB Title 17" Zoning to Create MSB 17.77 Large Lot District. Whereas Assembly Ordinance 25-090 adopts a new chapter, MSB 17.77 Large Lot District. Whereas the ordinance limits land use for future generations. Whereas the ordinance allows a group of landowners to dictate what their neighbor can do on their property in perpetuity. Whereas should this ordinance be adopted, the threshold of 67% is too low. Now therefore, but resolved that the Matanuskus Sit in a Borough Planning Commission hereby recommends failure of Assembly Ordinance 25-090.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Strawn. All right, can I get someone to move, what are we calling it now, 25?
22.
Dash 22.
Commissioner McCabe, I'll move 25-22.
Thank you. Commissioner McCabe moves 25-22. Can I get a second? Commissioner Collins with a second. All right, can we have some discussion? I think this pretty succinctly lays out our position as a group. Anyone disagree or anyone want any additions or edits? Hmm, okay. Are there any objections to approving the resolution? No objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, the resolution is approved. All right, moving on. Correspondence and information, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Commission business. Upcoming Planning Commission agenda items. Do any commissioners have any questions about the future agenda items provided in your folder? Any questions at all? All right. Then we are moving on to Director and Commissioner comments. Commissioner Zagorodny.
No comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McCabe?
Welcome to the new Commissioner and thanks, Alex, for helping us get that resolution written up so quickly.
Commissioner Collins?
Welcome. And just appreciate everyone's, you know, a firm believer in public participation and speaking on these matters. So I greatly appreciate that. And I appreciate the work everyone did today and we're coming together and working this out. Thank you, Alex, for all your assistance with that. Appreciate it, sir.
Commissioner Glenn?
Yeah, welcome to our new member and appreciate all of you and that's good. Have a nice week.
Director Strawn?
Uh, yeah, thank you. So, uh, I do want to remind everybody that we have a joint meeting with the assembly on October 14th. We have so far one agenda item, which is the community growth solutions study. And I will be presenting, uh, what is in that, that document. It's quite large. It's over 400 pages. So, um, that is going to be online, I think tomorrow. So, uh, uh, if, you know.
We sure you read all 400 pages?
Set aside a little time if you want to become familiar with the whole thing. A lot of its maps and, and technical recommendations. Uh, but, uh, I'll be talking all about it at that meeting. Uh, welcome to the new commissioner. You know, uh, and, uh, I did just want to say that, um, probably a lot of people have heard about the Willawak cleanup. This was a, uh, I think a really monumental success. Sort of, uh, the idea was created by Jason Ortiz and Wade Long was instrumental in sort of leading the charge, all hands on deck. Uh, we had, uh, I think around 270 volunteers that showed up over a three day period. We had, um, I think nearly a couple dozen businesses and entities that had, uh, that pitched in in one way or another. Uh, and we removed, um, over 200 tons of trash. Many, many vehicles, I think around 40 vehicles, a lot of hazmat. We, uh, demolished a couple of dilapidated structures. Uh, this was all, uh, property owners that were willing and happy to have this done and were willing to sign a waiver saying, yes, please do it. And, uh, the total amount of trash that we removed is around 40 large African elephants is how much it weighs. And a lot of it's very old trash that's been there for a long time. So we're, we gave that neighborhood a, um, a facelift. It looks really good right now, uh, and hope that they have a fresh start and, and take care of it going into the future. Uh, so, um, we had, uh, some member Sumner showed up there as well as some member Fawnov. And, uh, so tremendous success. There's going to be a presentation to the assembly tomorrow by, uh, Jason Ortiz and Wade Long at under manager's report. So, um, oh yeah, I guess, I guess I should give a shout out to the Church of Latter Day Saints, which had the vast majority of, of volunteers that showed up for this effort. So, um, yeah, uh, very exciting. If you want to hear the whole story, it's going to be presented tomorrow evening at the assembly meeting.
Great. Terrific news. Thank you, Alex. All right. In terms of my comments, um, just want to welcome Commissioner Zagrodny and, um, again, thanks for another productive meeting. So, uh, at this time I will call this meeting.